Call the Friday morning study session to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner.
Here.
Commissioner Walz.
Commissioner Rice.
Commissioner Duckham.
Commissioner Tompkins. Commissioner Mahoney.
Present.
Commissioner Elwell.
Here.
Chairman Shaw.
Here.
Seven present.
Any public comment? Please step forward to the microphone and identify yourself. You have three minutes.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Brenda LaChapelle. And a public comment in reference to the park and animal shelter millage. I've just got some pros and cons in reference to without a millage, we don't have animal control, which means we've got strays, we've got no kennel inspections, we've got no one following up on bites. Staffing at the shelter would stay low. Animal enrichment training and overstressed and overworked staffing would continue. Donations, charity work, volunteers, and nonprofits would eventually go away just because of, you know, partnership with the community. Basically, nonprofits will put their money where there's more partnership. Partner was kind of. Streets. We would have bite cases followed up on. We'd have kennel inspections. The cat projects and the spay and neutering programs that we have in our community would flourish. Cats and dogs, but it responds to wildlife farm animals and educates our community. And nonprofits would continue to fund the shelter with projects in partnership with the community and with the county. Infrastructure would be approved, capital improvements would. Village where we will be and with a millage where we could be.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Jeff Cruz. I live at 44 Coronado Drive at the present time. I just am up here to speak to you on the addressing ordinance that you're looking at Wheel and grease and everything like that, but I know I've been.
Good morning. John Wilson, City of Jackson resident. The proposal overall, part of the reason that the county. The biking and walking paths that had been constructed in the last. I would have thought that there would have been a long-term plan by the county. Now, apparently, you may ask the tax. Again, that should have been thought out from the start. Maybe before, you know, you can discuss that those. Pos to this millage increase. In the last few years, we've been asked to. A 20 percent pay increase. The county board chair.
More in property taxes. 30 seconds, John. Is once again a jewel, and that's because of all your hard work and. Property taxes. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for acknowledging the need for an increase for funding. Say you have a stray dog that's running at large and no one can catch the dog and a month goes by, two months goes by. No one can dart the. To obtain the drugs needed to dart that dog. So even if the sheriff's department did govern over these officers, one of the complications that we have run into in Jackson is I'm unwilling to put my license on the line for someone that is working for in the criminal justice field to go out and dart a dog. Those drugs are locked up, they're controlled, they're, we have our DEA that we value very highly, and so that's something to be considered. So I think that's just, you would think it'd be easy to go out and just trank a dog and then take it away and find the owners, but it's not that easy. So animal control officers these days are very well-trained, they're professionals, they're not laypeople off the street who like animals. It is very, very difficult to manage strays, it is very difficult to manage even when we go in and deal with hoarding situations, try to catch 110 cats out of a house that have never seen people. It is very, very difficult. That is why it is an area of expertise, and I think I've given you guys some great resources, and I'm hoping that you'll follow up with some people that are in Michigan that have been in law enforcement and have been very instrumental in revolutionizing animal control and also trying to do it in a way that's physically responsible. So I really appreciate you taking the time to address this issue.
Jeff's talking about it. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comments now closed. We're onto item four, parks.
Good morning. So, two years ago, y'all hired me. Thank you. It's been a tremendous honor to be a part of the Jackson leadership team. You all have been very supportive of a number of strategies that the Park Board and the Fair Board and we as staff have been able to begin implementing, and a lot of good things are happening in terms of improving the quality of life in Jackson. This is probably the most important presentation I've made since I've been here in terms of the long-term view of quality of life and what Jackson can be and will be, given the tremendous resources that exist here in the county. So I've been asked to present some information regarding the staff report that we've provided you, the motion to place a millage on the August ballot to fund. Right here. This usually goes well, so, okay. So we're going to go through. Slides. It was two paragraphs along our mission, and so we've boiled the two. Provides the environments that facilitate memorable experiences and enhance the quality of all remember. Rarely in our vacations or any of the things that. Happen here in Jackson County, and we want that word to. That continues to develop, and there's connectivity. These are quality bodies of water, very impressive. Some of the issues, and if the pictures embody this, you know, there's been a lack of operational and capital investment. Yes, it's interesting because this is fed by the federal government, it's fed by state government. There's always a number of grant opportunities, and we're always chasing the grants. It's interesting because the grants really allow us to enhance by expanding services, by expanding facilities, but show me a grant to maintain it after you've built it. They don't exist. The federal government doesn't give out maintenance money, neither does the state, but they encourage you to apply for the grants and develop, and we all do that. It's important to progress, but ultimately it becomes the local folks' responsibility to maintain those things that we improve or develop, and it's hard to come by those dollars. At this point, we estimate as staff, there is roughly a $20 million deferred maintenance bill that is due. That's not building new things, that's just taking what we currently have and bringing it up to a reasonable standard for use. In some of these pictures that you have in front of you, for instance, the swing set to the right seems so innocent, but what's missing from there, and there's probably some folks who wouldn't want me to say this out loud, but what's missing from there is safety surfacing, and that creates a huge risk for the county, and that exists all over the county system. Standards have changed. When that was built, that was okay. That's what I played on. In fact, I played on a playground that had asphalt, and that was okay too, and at least one kid broke his arm every semester of elementary school, and Dad smacked him upside the head and said, "That was dumb. What were you doing on top of that slide like that?" But the point is that that's the kind of maintenance issues that exist in the system and some of the risks that exist that we need to start addressing. You know, the question of how does the animal shelter and parks fit together? Well, the answer to that is that if you go to the top of the Cascades on any evening around 5:30 during the spring, summer, or fall, I say go to the top of the Cascades because you can see the entire 500 acres. It's a beautiful view, and look at our trail system inside the park, which was probably one of the first trail systems in the county, and you will see 50, you will see 100 dogs on leash, people walking them. The Cascades has become the unofficial county dog park, and people use it heavily in interacting with each other socially and their pets. So there lies the connection. My parks are heavily used by pet owners. Two good things happen. One, the pet gets some exercise and gets to socialize, and the adult, because of the pet, actually gets some exercise, which is a good thing, and we want that to continue to happen. As you've heard and some of the folks from the animal shelter obviously here, the animal shelter takes in all stray dogs. It's required to do that. It does accept cats, and cats are a big part of its business, but they're not necessarily required to take in the cats, but they do, and I want to emphasize they do, and that's important because that's a huge part of our animal population in the county. In your slide, it shows a four-day hold, but as I talk to the staff, in reality, it's rarely four days. It's a seven-day hold because unless it comes in perfectly on Monday, you know, the weekends don't count as business days, and almost a very high percentage of these animals end up being housed over the weekend and end up extending that stay. So it's generally a seven-day hold before they're ready for adoption, and the shelter has, over the last many years, moved out of the euthanasia as the primary outcome and have transitioned to a live outcome for animals in the adoption process, which is fantastic. Some of the services they offer, you're aware of, and I won't read through all these, but some very important issues dealing with communicable disease and medical examinations, the spay and neutering, which leads to some of the better methods for control, and there've been some positive outcomes over the last several years as that program has continued to grow. Vaccinations, again, a lot of these. And I'm going to go off script here, and you can read all of that, but at the end Our fellow counties that surround us that are of like population, we're taking. This and our competitors, our fellow counties. Truth of the matter is, when you manage things with a volunteer base, one, you're Up and down depending on the volunteers and the period of time, and ultimately there's. So it's not a sustainable approach to managing the. Control officers in 2014 because of some budget constraints. So this is an. But in reality, the animal control officers play a huge role. Role in, at the kennel or at the shelter in terms of. County parks, the distance between Round Lake and Clear Lake as an. Dell, we simply haven't been able to maintain the proper investment in. In our equipment and our facilities. Nobody's fault, that's unfortunate. Just is really a plan, this idea of a lack of a county vision. Vision for how we will maintain them, how we will take care of them, and how we'll Just finished up some work on, like I said, mission, vision, and priorities, and we're going to talk a little bit about those here in a few minutes. Ultimately, that costs the county in different ways when we have unfortunate legal actions taken against us that could have potentially been prevented with improved maintenance and the resources to do that. And again, these pictures help embody some of that. The other piece is the economic development piece, which is, you all know. Even if they're not planning to use that park that day, it gives them a perception. You drive through a downtown where many of the buildings are empty or closed down, it creates a perception, and your parks do the same thing throughout the county. They create a negative. This here, and they're an opportunity for that. If you don't take care of. Animal population, quite frankly, in the county. If they see, again. And we're not a safe community, and we all know that that's not true, but none. Residents and ultimately from business. Also, you know, as I keep telling you all, we're in the physical activity business. At the end of the day, we're in the health business, and if parks are not well-maintained, people won't feel safe to use them, and they won't come out and be physically active in those green spaces, which has a negative effect. So, important issues related to economic development. So what is the vision for the parks and the animal shelter? You've heard these before, but we believe that Jackson has the raw material. We have some tremendous natural resources, and if we leverage those, we can become one of the premier park systems, county park systems in the Midwest. And again, if you look at where today, those who are thought of as the premier park systems, and look at those counties' economy, they're generally very, very, very robust economies. People want to live there, people move there because of the high quality of life, and ultimately, business then comes because there are skilled labor workforce that is happy. You know, that's always underestimated, and I tell folks that business isn't just looking for skilled labor, they're looking for happy labor, because if folks don't have Locate in places where there's a high quality of life for their employees. You know, we want to leverage our lakes, we want to leverage our walkability as. Physically, more physically active, and we want to enhance the quality of animal welfare programs and make this a pet-friendly county where, again, that connection between parks and animals, where families with their pets are using our parks and being physically active as a part of that quality of life. So how can we realize the vision? We need to improve playground equipment, safety inspections, and response times. We currently don't have the staff, quite frankly, to do that. There was a discussion about trails. Yes, we have built a lot of trails over the last 10 years, 15 years, and there was a lot of grant money available to do that. The plan for maintaining is always a struggle because there aren't maintenance dollars that come with that. So you decide, do I turn down the grants and the opportunity to leverage those grants to build new infrastructure that makes the community a more attractive place because I haven't got the money to maintain it, or do I come up with the money to maintain it? And that's a struggle that happens all over the country, so don't think we're unique in that regard. Improve the ability to properly maintain structures, buildings, mechanical systems, we have a lot of those, and you all know that, and a small staff to try to do that, preserve our history through restoration of some of our proud, we have a grandstand that has a lot of historic memories tied to it in this community. We have a Cascades Falls that goes back to 1932. And some are from folks from other states or other parts of the country calling to It is a resource that continues to attract people. Communicating with right now the Michigan parks, our nature. So, how can we realize our vision? This is the animal. Not small amounts, but three or four acre park with walking trails. Pets to socialize off-leash has become a very. And are looking for opportunities for off-leash activity. and are looking for opportunities for off leash activity. Animal shelter, which is big business, hasn't had a full time son on a business that's spending several hundred thousand dollars or all. So how are we going to do this? We've got to establish a stable live anywhere. They're not tied by a job. Their jobs are very operations that we're seeing, being in the outdoors, being connected to nature. seven five mils, it would generate two mil, it would generate 3 million, two cost the annual taxpayer with a property valued at that would be spent, 2.1 million of that would go towards into these infrastructure repairs and improvements that would need to be made across incidents that we're dealing with. There are a lot of priority projects related to lake access trail systems and our access to water play a huge role. It also will go along of the animal shelter and its deficiencies that start with a some work. Storage is a huge issue. I don't know how folks get risk as every inch is going towards the animals themselves and the volume of animals coming in. A lot of inefficiencies that in the long haul cost money in terms of operation. the trail connectivity and development that's happening between us and the the nature association and nature conservancy and MSU and places to be more active, assure quality access to water, expand countywide variables that these funds would bring to the county and creating a with our domestic dogs and cat populations, improve public health and safety as a result. The Jackson County residents have a pet in their household. requirements in terms of how we expect to treat each other and how we expect families to treat it's about making Jackson an attractive place to live, play, raise a family and own a pet. It's about algorithm to have greater import of cash than you have folks leaving to vacation else
Jeff, I don't really think any questions for you, but I got a One of my concerns is when we're going to vote on this. I personally separate the two questions on when it would be and we should have it separated that way on when first and then the language of it. That'll be my plan. predicted that we'd be back here revisiting this because I feel strongly that we need I think there was conversation about it having one amount with an understanding that that's I want. So when it comes time to do the language, I'm hopeful that the and how much is going to the parks. I don't support putting what happened last time and that isn't right for animal control or the county.
Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We often have members of the public, not too long ago, and the perception of the public is that there's a special election in May. We're with that thought. I believe November would be they do in November. But the reality is that's not how it works and we're not going to change on this millage if it ends up being on the ballot. two millages. I do struggle though with a little bit of the fact that but why do you put language for two separate issues? Now with dogs, animals. We've seen that here many times over as county commissioner. If we go back to the original gas tax proposal one, so I think we need to take a look at that and be concerned about that as well. Thank you.
Jeff, I think it's very important too that we have a clear Plan B. If they don't support it, then we get to make a decision. We have to make tough decisions. Public understands what we're intending to do should these mill
if whatever you're going to do, you want to do it very well. So get out of some businesses, basically. is when we try to continue to do all of it with less resources and
in some late fall 2017 with Don Hayduk who is to me, the numbers are incorrect. We took in 2,349 animals taken. The request is for a new position option, which is attached for your review. There's also a white paper that's attached for your review as well at our recent meeting. But there are some concerns that are listed in there. $29,000, that's for a mid-range salary. Don in the health department as well as the animal shelter. Part of his salary does go I'm sorry, one other highlight. This will also move the white paper. There's two organizational charts.
couple of points again that really question. Firstly, I strongly support this and and again, I appreciate the hard work he's done up to this time. But this is something that we even I think. Thank you.
When?
Now.
So it'll be in March?
It's month.
Okay.
That's he's the environmental health director. That's his focus. That's his expertise. And yet he found Well, it becomes a job if you have to do it. And if you're the only person to do it, it's at our nation, at least economically. And, you know, I'm pretty optimistic about the if you, what good is a safe community if there's nothing to do outside of one's home? if you, what good is a safe community if there's nothing to do outside of one's home? In discussing these matters, you'll find that we've taken great, um,
mean Jeff and Christopher and their presentations, but I won't.
been and say that on board docs, meaning for the public and everyone to see, we do
So again, as Mike indicated, there are several items in board docs. I just wanted to provide just a very reading of, um, the questions. The community livability rep survey that was mailed out, um, to 1,500 residents. It was a random selection. Ability report is the result of those 316 randoms randomly so copies of, um, the map. There's a map in there of the informational packet. The supplemental online survey results is I did into the survey and there was 214 of those individuals that did, um, for that. The dashboard summary of findings is the here in the big report. And then I also attached, um, as a reference these. Um, they were typically on a scale of one to five with one creation in the community and other activities. The reports with the exception of the one that is specifically the online 316 individuals. I did include, um, our overall quali overall appearance of our neighborhoods. Um, so our overall quality of life did improve. The three pillars. Those include safety, mobility, natural and built environment. At, um, we did see some slight increases and some, um, slight decreases. Um, what areas did improve as what areas also we did see a decline in. Things. There were some safety concerns as well. Areas of improvement, we did so we improved in some very significant areas, which I think are, are a great There are the eight, um, facets that we're focused on. Seven aspects did improve in governments, government to worsen. Movement, which we've all seen the results of those improvements. Um, areas of concern were crime prevention and fire prevention. We did improve in confidence in county government. So Mike and I were very excited to see that. Participation participation in religious, um, activities, um, including neighborhood activities, communication with your neighbor. Um, so there were many, um, facets that were looked at in participation. Um, again, many of them stayed the same. We did have, um, some decline. One aspect was higher and it was interesting to see the areas of decline. Actually decreased, which was kind of a surprise. Um, reading and watching the local news, um, doing a favor for a neighbor. So, um, so that was kind of a concern. Some overall highlights, um, quality of life ratings, um, in Jackson County remained stable over time. Seven and 10 gave a favorable reviews to their neighborhood. Um, three out of four residents plan to remain in the county for the next five years. So that's positive. We're doing some Um, we did have a custom question. We had seven custom questions that, um, some of our, um, departments and department heads and elected rising in today's, um, day and age of everyone having, um, technology that they, um, trends over time. On the report, 99 items were rated similarly into, as compared to to several aspects of safety decreased and those are listed there. Again, the I'll work on some of those.
Answers for this. We, we contract this survey process out, correct?
Yes, we do. It's through
All of our constituents are in the city. So for the ability for us to really like what, um, municipality they live in and what their, you know, government lines are. I think that would be L. Can't two miles from here to, to here. It's, it's the, the county ultimately, um, views transportation. So, I mean, things from that. And I know Chris is gonna come and talk about, uh, transportation and I, I've had the monies that, uh, as county residents, the city residents are, are, are kicking into the county. Get surveys and we were off of the, kind of the nadir in terms of our economic and actually increasing because, you know, part of the problems, number of the problems we have today in terms of trying to figure turns, safety and economic development. And we've done that. Now the problem is and if we have to parse the dollars out that we already have for safety for, for worth of the fact that it takes financing and it takes vision and it takes long-term
sent out in November. Um, subsequent ones were sent out in December as some of the results may have been impacted by those things as well. Some of the, you know,
Deborah, I just, uh, does the, uh, cause obviously uh, for the fact that, uh, we're doing this survey, uh, I think most say they're not gonna do this. They don't want to see what the results are. Um, but do we share this see this information because this, this isn't just a Jackson County issue. This isn't an issue the majority of what you say is similar. Similar tells me we're in neutral. We're not going and 39% and 15, it was 2,000, and in 15, it was 51%. Um, are concerning to me. Um, we need to make sure that all our
access in 2019. Um, we will also be sending this out to all the
like up, uh, that we have the courage to do say, think may or may not be correct. Uh, I've always encouraged my peers and I would also add that when, when you look every other year, the off year. So we do a survey out every year. It's either employee or a public um, specific, uh, more focused survey survey data points, but a much better, more accurate result. That, uh, we believe the needle's moving in the wrong direction. Uh, again, that's what our scope or span of control that where we need to go out and make sure that everybody were not a surprise to me in a sense, uh, like transportation, uh, as a complaint, myself included of like, darn it, I have to turn around and go back around the other way. Uh, given what Christopher's gonna talk about and given what, uh, we've, uh, done thus far. And these, that, that needle should start to move, uh, and it should never slow down from my, my perspective. Like, i- 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 if you have anything to add, otherwise they're gonna just opposed
Duly carried. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. And that leaves we have of our 11 contracts, we have nine Now we'll bring that as soon as we can to the board for, for approval. And that leaves one union
I don't hear much through the speakers. Going to, with your blessing.
Seconds a slide, just so you know.
How much?
Fifteen seconds a slide.
This is actually, as Mike alluded to, a few moments We have researched this extensively. But this is Director of Operations and Angie Klein, our Director of Engineering, along with our Senior Civil Engineer Brett Taylor. And even up until 1:00 AM in the hotel lobby, trying to crunch numbers in back of the nap gone. And in the last few years, five years, in the last year or two. Take a few moments, about 18 to be exact, to talk about our future. A problem statement to kind of frame why we're here, why we've been looking at this. Where do you put your shovel? Where do you throw the patch mix? If you were in a patch truck right now, they think we're a joke. Review of that and not built properly, to be blunt and honest. So I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, Bob or Angie, but it goes anywhere from nine inch out and we'll come back into small stuff, but the roads literally fall apart right behind us. We're throwing good money after bad. If you've driven along I-94 on these new stretches of thin overlay they put down. credit, they are just trying to get a stop cap measure in and he's it off, put it back down, mill it off, put it back down. Gives everyone a very happy, smooth ride. So we're doing the best we can and we pray it'll hold together. And no, we did not take a work like this. So what if, let's just look forward, please. Like, like 10, nine, eight on that pacer rating scale that I often use, the typical life cycle for a road. Think of your car as something we'll use every day, 30 years, right? If you've never changed the oil, it didn't wash it, et cetera. If we did nothing to the roads, which is, it's at four. That's our bar here in Michigan. In Canada, we So routine maintenance be that oil changing, car washing, preventative maintenance is more of that. Then you get into the real pricey stuff. And here's an astonishing fact. With year zero on the left, you'd crack fill sometime between now and year five. It's time to get a new one and you grind up the road, crush in shape it or possibly I don't hear much through the speakers. So, um, all right. Going to, with your blessing.
Seconds a slide, just so you know.
How much?
Fifteen seconds a slide.
Just some trick for a year or two. This is actually, as Mike alluded to, a few moments and perhaps even nationwide. We have researched this extensively. But this is Director of Operations and Angie Klein, our Director of Engineering, along with our Senior Civil Engineer Brett Taylor. And even up until 1:00 AM in the hotel lobby, trying to crunch numbers in back of the nap gone. And in the last few years, five years, in the last year or two. Take a few moments, about 18 to be exact, to talk about our future. A problem statement to kind of frame why we're here, why we've been looking at this. Where do you put your shovel? Where do you throw the patch mix? If you were in a patch truck right now, they think we're a joke. Review of that and not built properly, to be blunt and honest. So I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, Bob or Angie, but it goes anywhere from nine inch out and we'll come back into small stuff, but the roads literally fall apart right behind us. If you've driven along I-94 on these new stretches of thin overlay they put down. Now to give M.D. credit, they are just trying to get a stop cap measure in and he's it off, put it back down, mill it off, put it back down. Gives everyone a very happy, smooth ride. So we're doing the best we can and we pray it'll hold together. And no, we did not take a work like this. So what if, let's just look forward, please. Like, like 10, nine, eight on that pacer rating scale that I often use, the typical life cycle for a road. Think of your car as something we'll use every day, 30 years, right? If you've never changed the oil, it didn't wash it, et cetera. If we did nothing to the roads, which is, it's at four. That's our bar here in Michigan. In Canada, we So routine maintenance be that oil changing, car washing, preventative maintenance is more of that. Five thousand a mile, gip seal. Then you get into the real pricey stuff. And here's an astonishing fact. So with year zero on the left, you'd crack fill sometime between now and year five. It's time to get a new one and you grind up the road, crush in shape it or possibly Here's our primary roads right now, fast Our local road system, 85% poor, a whopping six This core is from a cold in place recycled road. Everything below my finger is ground up road. The other cores, you get stretches where it's been patched. So how can we have this? For over the years, over the last century, that's valuable. And basically make it homogeneous as you see in the bottom eight inches of this core. Here, that shows you that the technology is something growing and very serious. So John Into the machine. Do you have a question, Dave?
Yeah, I do. Chris.
Requires other means or methods.
Are there many that are like that or percentage wise?
However, I could tell you more later. Ground penetrating radar can Top, it's 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 malleable. A little bit, it moves, it doesn't crack. It's a series of machinery. The cement truck, you see One machine and a rod pushes it. The machine has a thousand horsepower diesel Like this is in the past, as you're rotelling a garden, if the soil's hard or you hit a rock, Series of sensors that prevent that. So we That you need. So the rolling is very, very important. To get the best quality out of the base.
Fast does this go or how much ground can it cover in a time period?
So you get started early in the morning at daybreak and you can take one side of the road. Correct. I'm going to advance a slide here to show you that this is just traditional milling that you often see the machines Do for the recycling, it actually would do an upcut to bring the material out and And that's about the only place we could see this work happen this time of year. So time of year was a factor, but also they are Top. You see here it has asphalt on the top. You come back and you pave it within three days to a week. This guy right here that my mouse is circling around is he's the man. If there's an issue, a manhole or whatever, this this large machine Around the structure and then replace the conveying without missing a beat. Learn, it's proven, it's a preferred fix. Actually, we were shocked to hear Baseline, no cracks. And we found this consistent in that that video we saw in Canada, Highway 23, no cracks.
Traffic. But come on, we're not going to use that there. We're going to use it on our roads.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically, yes.
Yeah, that's actually where this study was was done with that.
Look. Am right with this type of this type of product or this type of process.
Chance to talk to the head of Pavements and Foundations at the Ministry of Transportation, which is basically Very knowledgeable and they do it all the way further north under Bay Area. Two or three and their price shot up substantially by about $10. Those requests from townships, this machine will do it and it'll lay the most beautiful gravel road you've ever seen. Bust it up. You can mobilize, drop it down, take that base. Travel below. So that's just a fine distinction distinction between four and five. investment in this and it will be financed by an installment purchase agreement just Thank you. So looking long term, if we really go the long haul, the hail Mary and we want the placing and your less reflective cracking, we've already talked about that. It's the prefer. You know how roads, they do this by the way, a lot of them as you're driving? Back to one, et cetera. It's exactly one and a half inches through the whole project. Invest eight oh my inquiring minds want to know, you got the popcorn bet?
The 3800 CR rear load for cold recycling and the down cut
He was hurt or killed thankfully, but it's a serious matter. So in Germany, they didn't even release their machine. Can actually conveyor belt it off ahead of it. So if we have a road without enough base,
concept of the 3800 CR also permits conventional high performance
You'd haul it nearby, it's stockpiled, run it through, it's on a semi trailer. That using traditional methods on a sustainable cycle, less on average and the roads are much stronger, that $10 million we wasted was out by inner board docks for next week if if you'd like to see that. Dollar, excuse me, 10 years on a $5 million.
And we're going to save 100,000 a month. Average. So say it's not the first 50, say it's the first 100. Still, we're going to do
early wins and success with, but we would try, we would try, you know, Mike and I have talked about this.
Straight roads, you know, where you have a subdivision, where you have a lot of obstacles in the subdivision. Some of the more local roads, no. Some of our main roads, I would think all yes.
What we could do each year would be between 40 and 60 miles. And the reason I give such You also only have maybe 80 good working days out of the year because Try to do it with the staffing that's been approved.
No, not I'm just but you know how it is. You have good employees. That's much more rewarding, satisfying to do that. The cause for, oh my gosh, we need a full on investigation of why this pothole happened. What did we do wrong?
So to answer your question more directly, Dave, in line with what Mike said, this trimming, puddle patching and Mike and I have been very conservative in our our staffing numbers. Again, we write
Just to reiterate there, the right sizing for the winter operation, you know, again, we don't want attracting again, best value trying to, you know, we're not saying that, you know, for the public, for the taxpayers that we represent.
Yes. And so It's just the primaries. That keeps us busy. That's a baseline. This machine is paid for otherwise cost a tremendous amount of money. Our people and and our have a way to do that. We won't get there in the traditional methods, in my opinion, looking out at least in villages and the communities. I know there's there's at least one man 10 to 12 years ago. So They may be, but yeah, we'd be hopeful. It wouldn't We need partners to pave the asphalt because we're going to be busy.
We as a commission ultimately will have to make a decision, but I would just like to say You just said, it doesn't sound like maybe other road department heads maybe are looking and it shows that it works. And I also like to say that effort to do that. And for those out there
We make sure everything is explored fully. This has been vetted over quite a while.
I believe 72,000 to 80. What's that going to look like in the Michigan
It's Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's I guess I need a better education of understanding how as county residents
You can tell I'm passionate about this. Sorry.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He's Spread it all out as a homogeneous base, then pave, so you don't have that trouble. So, you can tell I'm passionate about this, sorry. Travel layer.
I'd like to see that graphic. Do you have that right now?
Uh, sure.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I guess I need a better education of understanding how, how as county residents review there.
Yeah.
Because that's good for everyone. Because it's not just this body, that's, those are, those are gas tax, you know, those are highway dollars.
This, but I had the opportunity to sit through three of the four present You guys could have recorded that and turned it into a podcast. That would have been an incredible education.
That's actually something that we're hoping to do. It's on our list. We also want to
is rack, egg, and base and emulsion. And this is what you get.
Right. That's asphalt that's there, blend it all together to get that solid, that they find that that's a really
It's the same process. The only thing with crushing shape is sometimes we do find and then pave on top of it. With this, you don't have to break through all of the HMA.
Reason it won't crack is because you have a constant section heating and cooling together.
That's one thing, you know, that I personally don't think most people understand because I know I I cannot tell you how many times I've said for years to us. Don't ask me to get into why we haven't done it here, but I have my
Formex industry hates them, to be blunt. I'll say it here. It's true. There is an adverse paving. And so we look forward to that partnership with our local companies that Oh, it's still there.
We've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. You have two minutes to address
versus November ballot issue, public safety and liability. Div to quickly bring this to ballot and to get animal control
Legions There. That is a star in Jackson. Our program on the parks. I can't in city.
Any other public comment?
It's
So, just a little bit further then, what does that do for the current situation at the Coronado subdivision? Is that, I'm guessing, going to be too late to do anything with that, if that's accurate?
Um, the, the committee is somewhat limited in what they can do because we have a county law and ordinance passed by this body that none of us have the authority to, of ourselves, say we won't follow. But that doesn't mean that we can, we have to move as quickly as one might necessarily move. So, my expectation, to be frank, is that, I know the letters had gone out to those residents, there's a dozen residents, I believe, there. And there is no enforcement mechanism in the sense that people are going to be going out there from the county or township telling them, hey, your address has got to be changed today or anything like that. So, I think until the board has had opportunity to review the ordinance and, and make any and all changes, that it would be my recommendation that those residents not necessarily take any action to make any changes to their addresses until, you know, because this is what's driving us to take another look at the ordinance. So while their time to appeal has come and went, their only option would be Circuit Court if they wanted to go there. I think frankly, what they should do is just kind of wait another month and let us do what we do.
Well, I'll first say that we haven't rehearsed this, but you've taken the conversation right where it wants it to go, which is, I'm fearful that the horse has left the barn already on the process, and if they do nothing, it's going to change. So why?
No, there's nothing going to change at this point unless they change their address themselves. But I know I spoke to Jeff and he's, I'm not sure, is he, are you the president of that association? Okay. President of the association. I'm sure he's communicating with his membership that, that I have encouraged them not to go changing their driver's license or any of that information. The post people know who lives there and where they live. So, there's, there's no, in my mind, thought that they're going to not get their mail or anything like
Well, I wondered to myself if we should be acting to temporarily suspend the ordinance until we get a chance to review the recommendation from the committee and then look at potential changes. I understand the committee will make a recommendation, but it's us that decide what the county ordinance is going to be. And I've stated publicly before, I think that although I agree the committee is following what the ordinance says, I think it has drifted from what the original intent was, which was to eliminate duplicate addresses in the county. I, nobody knows safety, public safety better than me here on the board, anyway. And I just think we've drifted far in the ordinance from what the original intent was. And I'm supportive of taking a look at that again, and I don't want to wait until the door is closed on doing anything with that particular one. That's, wheels are in motion on now. So that's why I thought we should potentially consider suspending the ordinance temporarily until we could move forward.
Yeah, I would recommend against that, frankly. We need the ordinance to continue on in place as we're dealing with other issues across the county. We don't want to suspend the ordinance per se. And on, and on top of that, I would add that while this is a unique situation, we do not want to be in a situation where we're making exceptions without fully being able to document and support why we've done what we've done because the next situation, and be assured there will be one. We have 160,000 residents. There will be one. We may not feel the same way. It may not be exactly the same case, and we could end up in court saying, well, how come you didn't do that for me? And so I'd rather keep the ordinance in place. I think we're on good ground. We're not going to cause additional harm, if you will, or angst for those residents. The committee is going to meet next Thursday to review the changes that have been drafted. And of course, we'll come to the board at our first meeting in April, and you guys will get your, have your opportunity to change the ordinance there. But I don't think there's any harm in holding it the same unless you feel differently, but
As long as he doesn't act.
Yeah, no, that, I've got that covered. We're good there. So, good enough. Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. A fun fact. Next Saturday, March 10th, is Beer Fest at the fairgrounds. It's from noon to 5:00. Tickets in advance are $30. It's a good time. You get a tasting glass and 10 tokens with your $30 ticket. And all the money that is raised from this goes to the premium account for the fair. So, if you haven't gotten your tickets already, I suggest you get them. You can get them at the fair office. You can get them on e-tix. And come see us on March 10th.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, we stand adjourned.